The Springfield Central School District Board of Education meeting is in work, 7:01. Board members present this evening. It's Danny, Mr. Dunn, Ms. Tatum, Ms. Wong, herself, and Ms. Hurd, Ms. White, Mr. Mann, and Ms. Rich, who are not the members of the class this evening. We will get it. So with that, please rise and join me. I would like to introduce my director, my superintendent, my mission, my crowd. And we will be here to discuss this. Thank you. All right, so we'll move to the rough school council once this school starts. Approval of 35 minutes. I'm going to ask the board to come back to this. The Catholic is here, the doctor will have the full form of members that were attending at that meeting, so if that's okay, we'll move that to the higher. So she arrived. Moving on, we have our first board forum, and I'll start on my left with, uh, Shu. John. Yeah. And I just want to say that I'm looking forward to the presentation this evening. The Paul Reo thing with superintendent and some conversation around what that looks like, things revolving, obviously, maybe us heard, uh, the new governor, Governor talk about some of the issues around schools and masks. That, again, very fluid situation. Basically, superintendent, we'll see how we proceed forward as a district. With that, I will move to the public forum. Resident students, employees, and business representatives of the Springfield Central School District may address the board on matters between school and school operations of the matter involving personnel, members of the board, not registered, responding to any concerns, for the public forum. If response is appropriate, through the president or superintendent contact, we will, those persons wishing address the board with record of chair reading, state their relevant name, address the person's official business. While the board does not wish to respond to these speech protections, it must stress that the school is not the student. The board president will conduct the call to order the operation of this. My vision and remarks, which would be submitted to it, should be designed with a clear, on common chat, with requirements, and, uh, what's happening. And, uh, is there anyone you'd like to address before? Yes?
Hello, I'm Catherine Van Orden, I'm a resident of East Springfield, and I'm one of students at Genie Elementary School and the Middle School. Uh, good evening, Superintendent Simons, Mr. McHugh, Mr. Oino, members of the school board. I know that what has transpired over the last eighteen months has redefined what school looks like, and it has challenged all of us to adjust in our roles as administrators, teachers, and parents in this ever-changing pandemic world. Thank you for what you have done and for allowing me to address you this evening. I'm sure that you've been inundated with questions and concerns from parents about the reopening plans. In speaking with other parents, some who agree with me in terms of what the plan should look like, and some who have vastly different opinions, one thing is abundantly clear: Parents are scared. Some parents, like myself, fear this area could become Dallas, Texas, where the pandemic in children has taken such a terrible turn, that Judge Clay Jenkins said on August fourteenth that if your child needs an ICP back, then your child will wait for another to die. Other parents fear long-term negative effects on children from wearing masks all day. Whatever reason, the emotional response is similar. We want what is best for our children, and we are looking to you to provide that. When I consider many of the different fears parents have, I see similar solutions that could potentially satisfy many different people. I am extremely concerned about my kids being in school at all, even with masks, and as I did last year, I would consider a remote option for them. A parent who is fearful of the impact of their child wearing a mask all day might also choose the remote school option. One solution that would support two completely different opinions. Even though we can technically accommodate students in our cafeterias with creative distancing, it's still dangerous. It would still require quarantining if someone tests positive as they remove their masks to eat. And the prison-style dining is unpleasant. Why not set up tents for the better weather and allow the students to eat outside? They would be safer. And we could allow more mask-free time and a more organic seating arrangement and conversations. Again, parents with very different opinions may be happy with the decision. When I was at sixth grade orientation earlier this week, we were told that there was a pending request to reduce the social distancing and banning chorus from six feet to three feet to allow a larger group in the room at one time. If someone was quite familiar with the single Seattle church choir rehearsal on March tenth, twenty twenty, that led to dozens of infections and two deaths, I'm petrified. My son was registered for both programs, but I did not put his health at risk, and I removed him from both. And two weeks before the beginning of school, to not have a firm answer is frustrating, and I did not feel like I could wait any longer to get that response. However, why not keep the group smaller? In middle school, these students have barely had any time on their band instruments. They could benefit from a smaller group setting with more direct attention and instruction. Well, this may look different than banning chorus has in the past. Different isn't bad, it's just different. I'm also frustrated with the lack of communication from the district about these issues. Ten days ago, I emailed several of you in this room with a list of my questions regarding entrance into the full-able program, and I've yet to receive a response, and the deadline to request it is in two days. While I know you won't respond to my questions in this setting, I do want to verbalize the fear in case other parents feel the same. I am disappointed in the decision to only allow students with medical needs to participate in such a program, as many students may benefit from. I'm also concerned about the lack of transparency in the determination process. What medical conditions are being considered? Who is the doctor that is referred to by the district who's helping with this process? How can I contact him or her? Can my child's psychologist sign the form, as he doesn't have a New York State medical license? And what is the district's liability if you deny a request for remote school and the student contracts COVID in the in-person school setting? In other words, to whom do I direct my lawsuit? By waiting so long to present the plan, parents are being backed into an unstable corner. It's too late to enroll our kids in any private schools. In New York State, the deadline to submit paperwork to clarify the intent of homeschool is fourteen days in advance. That's tomorrow. With the public forums taking place through Tuesday of next week, we're being left without options and without recourse. Will there be flexibility on the homeschool deadline, as that timing is not considered in presenting this plan? And to the board, I'd like to issue a challenge. You have a dual role to support the school while also being the voice of the stakeholders. I understand that the current climate of contentious board meetings and angry confrontations, your job's gotten harder. However, it's a job you've chosen. In watching live streams of previous meetings, I'm concerned about the second hole being abandoned. After ideas are presented, I'm not hearing questions, requests for clarification, pointing out weaknesses and concerns, and hear silence. As a parent, I have dozens of questions. And I know others do, too. You are our voice, you're here to ask our questions. As you listen tonight, please try to act as the voice of your stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? No? Okay. I think that, um, based on the presentation and the evolving situation, Mr. Simons has the most current information that we can utilize to present, and we hope to cover many of those areas that we mentioned this evening in the whole forum. So with that, I will turn over to Mr. Simons, President Superintendent, to give us the presentation.
Because we don't have to ask Mr. Goodman if we could hold the presentation on screen for everyone to see, or hear, but also we have a live stream. Take it back to the first slide. So over the course of this summer, as we ended last school year with about a point three percent infection rate in Rensselaer County, we were not anticipating that many of the protocols, procedures that we put in place last year would, we were hoping that they wouldn't have to be implemented this year. But with the evolving situation with the Delta variant and new information flowing from the CDC to our state, and the announcement that the New York State Department of Health is not going to issue clear regulations, we only learned what considerations were going to be really at the end of July and the beginning of August. And we were to go off of, work off of the CDC guidance, collaborate within our region with Rensselaer County Department of Health and other districts. And so our overall plan reflects the collaboration, really what is a regional approach within our question, our focuses. There may be some variance based on the size of the district, number of students involved in specific programs, but for the most part, most districts in our area are following the same plan and protocols. I point that out because since the time that we started developing this, New York State Education Department released guidance which was aligned with the CDC. And so we looked at CDC as well as New York State Education Department. Much different from last year, plans are not required to be approved by the state, submitted by the state education department or approved unless we hear differently from Governor Hockel within the next few days. Additionally, we've had a transition in the governorship. Governor Hockel has indicated that she supports a statewide policy requiring masks at school. Our plan already reflected that policy, as our most districts are in our region. So to start, I'm really looking forward to this school year. I know that our staff, teachers, our support staff, our administrators, and our board are really looking for a positive opening, and looking forward to welcoming the students back in our classroom. We know that we were challenged by space last year in the six-feet social distancing requirement. It really wasn't until after the spring break that we were able to bring all of our students at the elementary school level up to sixth grade in for more in-person learning. The middle school seventh and eighth graders and the ninth and twelfth graders remain all year in private learning because of the, uh, requirements to cohort students, which are no longer required within any guidance that we receive. So we are looking forward to welcoming the large majority of our students back for full in-person learning, and plans reflect the supports, academic and social-emotional, that our students are going to need to make that transition successfully, as well as the health and safety standards as described by the CDC and the New York State Education Department guidelines, which have also incorporated the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Currently, Rensselaer County's infection rate stands at about four point four, four point five percent. We've had meetings throughout the summer with the Rensselaer County Department of Health, as recently as today, weekly meetings on Wednesday. Then around in the presentation, I will talk about some of the information that they shared today regarding contact tracing, differences between how contact tracing will be done this year versus how it was done last year. Right now, according to the data that is available from the county health department, we have approximately sixty-nine percent of the county's population, eighteen years and older, fully vaccinated, and about sixty-seven point four of our twelve-year-olds. We all know that we are hoping that at some point within this school year, vaccines will be approved and authorized by the FDA for children. To be clear, school districts are not legally authorized to require students to be vaccinated at this point. We are not required, we are not allowed to require employees to be vaccinated. One of the things that Governor Hockel has spoke about was the potential for legislation that would require school district employees to be vaccinated, so that was something that we're going to have to continue to watch. So our vaccination rate in the county is fairly positive, but we are classified as being in a high transmission zone. We leave all of the counties in New York State right now by CDC are in high transmission. And that is important because there are certain CDC guidelines that come into place as recommendations when districts are located in a high transmission zone. Our strategies will include doing daily temperature checks of our students and our employees as they come into the building. To make sure that we can do this process as smoothly as possible, if kids need to classes, they need a long time, the district has prepared additional thermal scanning machines for the elementary school level. The middle school and the high school currently has those machines. The elementary schools will continue to use handheld until such time as the thermal scanners arrive. Universal masking, all students, all employees, regardless of vaccination status, will be required to wear masks. Then around in the presentation, I will talk about differentiation between the mask break guidelines for the elementary school versus the middle school and the high school. Social distancing requirements, social distancing guidance evolved over the course of the last year because as we experienced the impact of not being able to offer full in-person learning across the country, the CDC and other health officials began to recognize that there was not only an educational impact on students by not being able to have those kids in class every day, but there was a health impact. And so as the issues began to study further, looking at health and safety, but also looking at emotional health and well-being, the CDC has changed the guidance to advise districts that we can go with three feet, and we can go with, uh, doing the best that we can if going to three feet would prevent us from making sure that all of our kids come into our classrooms and get to learn. In all cases, elementary, middle school, and high school, our students will be sitting in classrooms that are a minimum of three feet apart, and in some buildings where classrooms are larger, it will be more than that. But we are able to accommodate all of our students in our classrooms with a three-feet parameter. Additionally, our cafeterias are being set up in accordance with the CDC guidelines to provide seating that will permit students to be served lunch, remain socially distanced a minimum of three feet, in some cases more. And the seating arrangements are individualized and different from the elementary, middle school, and high school, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. We're encouraging everybody to continue to follow respiratory etiquette, washing your hands, covering your mouth and nose when you sneeze, those kinds of good practices that we've all been hearing about and deploying over the last few years. And we're asking the parents and the guardians and the staff, make sure that they are screening for symptoms every day. The CDC guidance, nor the state guidance, requires us to do a screening, use a screening tool, such as the app that we utilized last year, and the volume of the students that will be coming in every day makes the management of that more difficult. So relying on the parents to screen their children for symptoms, encouraging them not to send their children if they are sick, and we're pressing this with our employees, make sure that our employees do not report to work if they are experiencing any symptoms that are on the CDC list as an indicative indicator of COVID-19. And we are working with the county on grant program that will enable our district to implement surveillance testing. Our county has received a federal grant of three point eight million dollars. All of the districts, Quest started, and working with their respective counties, put together a protocol for surveillance testing. The final authorization of the county's program has not occurred yet at the state level, so we do not anticipate that this program of testing will begin in September. The only testing program that we're operating right now is for our students, for our role in high-risk athletic activities, but you should expect that we will be talking more about testing as the county receives approval for its plan and the supplies and the equipment are available for all of the districts. Every district in Rensselaer County participating in a very similar model of both surveillance testing, and we're also talking about point-of-care testing, which could be utilized in the event that we have a student or a staff member in the school indicating symptoms of COVID-19, we could do the test right on site, isolate the student or the staff member, and determine whether or not they are positive for COVID-19 and need to be referred to physician or for the testing. Face masks, right? This has been a controversial topic as of last spring, particularly when the weather got hotter and more humid. We are requiring everybody to wear it. Acceptable masks include cloth masks, surgical masks. They need to be worn properly in accordance with the CDC guidelines, fully covering the mouth and the nose. That includes students, staff, visitors who come into our schools, and everyone on the bus, including the students, driver, and any bus aides that are assigned to our buses. Bandanas and neck gaiters will not be permitted. Again, a rule will not differentiate between vaccinated and unvaccinated for two reasons. One, we don't necessarily have a vaccine, we do not have a vaccine available for younger children. We do not necessarily have the authority to require our employees to provide vaccination, although we'll be doing a voluntary survey. The other issue is our county is experiencing, about thirty percent of the new cases are cases that are, they refer to as breakthrough cases. People who are already fully vaccinated are experiencing, uh, getting COVID-19. So for those reasons, we are not differentiating our rules for that, for mask wearing regarding vaccination status. Mask breaks will be provided when students are seated in class. The elementary students change their classes, they go to art, they go to music, they go to physical education, they drop lunch, they go to recess, or different instructional activities that occur during the day. So as kids are transitioning, at the discretion of the elementary teacher, a minimum of three mask breaks will be provided during the course of an elementary. Again, there could be more mask breaks provided, so those mask breaks have to occur when the students are seated and quiet. Mask breaks will also occur when students in the younger grade levels are provided a snack, and that snack will be done in a certain way to ensure that the social distancing requirements continue to be maintained. Every other row will have their snack, and they'll put their mask back on, and the alternate rows will put their masks, lay their masks on the couch. So at all times while students are having snacks in the classroom, they will be socially distanced within the parameter and seated at their desks. And masks will remain optional when outdoors and not school property. See, the kids that are out tonight, outdoor athletics does not require masks to be worn. The only sport right now in the fall indoors involves volleyball. Those athletes will be required to wear a mask. We'll be maintaining three feet of physical distance between the students in all classrooms, a minimum of three feet, and we will be able to accommodate all of the children in all of our classrooms in person. Ventilation. Last year, prior to the opening of school, the district contracted with Trane Corporation to do an indoor air quality study of all of our heating and air systems within our buildings, gauging the quality of the filters, the replacement schedule on those filters, how well the motors within the units, the ventilators, functioning, uh, looking at the level of fresh air that could be brought in every day, and the level of potentially contaminated air that could be pushed out every day. And we made some corrections and some changes both last year and this year. We are currently running a purge cycle, which means that we open up the dampers before the kids and the staff arrive, and even the motor is running on our unit ventilators twenty-four seven. We need more fresh air in than pushing the bad air out. Additionally, we have upgraded air filters, and this year we continue to work, I think for the first time in many, many years, all of our unit ventilators, uh, and the exhaust fans are functioning properly. Right? So, and there is a report that we are utilizing to show what we've accomplished so far, what will need to be accomplished through a capital project, because those are some things that are a lot more extensive. But I believe that we are one of the only districts that addressed air quality to the degree that we have. And we have shared that information with, uh, our employees, and we'd be happy to share it with our parents. Cleaning and disinfecting, uh, the regular cleaning and disinfecting on a daily basis will occur, including between each of our school bus runs. The school buildings will continue to be disinfected and cleaned on a daily basis. The actual employees that we hired and paid to do the work in the evenings and sometimes on the weekends will continue this year. And in the event that we do receive a notification that, uh, a child or a staff member in a particular instructional or administrative space has been identified as positive for COVID-19, we utilize our own folks, we also bring in an outside service to make sure that those areas are clean and disinfected thoroughly, and we do that through Quest arbozes. Additionally, remember last year, there was a lot of discussion about the ability of COVID-19 to be transferred to a person through surface contact. CDC has been studying this issue, they have reduced the level of concern associated with tracking COVID-19 to the surface. So we will not have to lay in the desks in between classes. However, teachers will have the option to do that, they are more comfortable, but that is not something that is required by CDC. Once a day is indicated as sufficient. Additionally, in this same area of talking about surface touch, last year we had a limit to some of the instructional materials that the children utilize, things that the kids normally would use, even to the sense of library books. When library books were checked out of the library, had to be put into a plastic bag or a special bin, and we allowed them to sit for a period of time. We're being advised that that is no longer necessary, or we can resume the normal utilization of instructional materials for our children. However, we've also talked to the administrators and the teachers about the fact that we learned a lot about the ability to be able to provide written materials through an electronic form. We don't want to go back to sixth graders walking through the hallways of golf with five or six three-inch binders. We want that, to that type of material to be eliminated or reduced so that kids can have access, and we're encouraging everyone in our school to continue to Google classroom use, even though kids are generally attending in person. Additionally, we're riding the bus. The school transportation department is subject to the same mask transit requirements for any other busing system in our country. And what that means is we no longer have to socially distance children on a bus. We run our buses with as many children that need to be taken to school. We are, we will be having our windows and our roof hatches open as long as Mother permits, because Nevisis and County offices today, three things. It's the social distancing, it's the ventilation, and it's the vaccination. Those are the three things that they thought were the priorities of our plans. And cleaning and disinfecting of the bus runs will continue daily.
Mr. Simmons, anything other than the question? The freakiest around, uh, parent drop off.
So last year, many parents felt very scared and reluctant to have their children on the bus, understandably. And the district made changes to the way that buses come into their schools and the way that the parent drop off is done. In some schools, including Red Mill, Off Middle School, and several others, the level of parent traffic backed up to a degree that that posed a pretty significant health and safety concern for the district. So we are not encouraging parents who can have their children on the bus to, um, continue to bring our kids to school. We believe that following these protocols, our buses will be safe, uh, and we want to accommodate parents as much as possible, but in some cases, the backing up of the traffic was very, very difficult. Genie School as well, Genie was backed up, uh, ready to move forward. It is the parents It is the parents' choice, but we think riding a bus with the protocols we have in place will be safe. Athletics. One of the cafeteria, okay? At the elementary school level, everyone is following a fairly consistent plan in all classes. Students will be sitting in individual seats, not at round tables, not at regular point-blank tables, and they won't be sitting in groups. We are required to distance students as they come into the cafeteria as much as we can in order to be able to serve lunch. They will sit down, they will eat their lunch, take their masks off, they will eat their lunch, they will put their mask on, they will walk and recess. The county confirmed today that's that 15-minute rule, more or less, that's going to be the standard for contact tracing. So I know the little ones take time to eat, kindergartners and first graders especially. We're going to try to make sure that kids can get served, sit down, eat their lunch within 15 minutes, get outside and enjoy some fresh air, where they can take their masks off at the elementary school level. At the middle school level, we are also doing individual seating. We recorded at a former meeting that three-by-three tables were ordered for that purpose. In order to get the number of students that need to be served at lunch, and at the same time, we needed more seating capacity. So we are returning those three-by-three tables, and we'll be utilizing the college style, we'll call them the one-armed bandits, at the middle school level. At the high school level, we have tables, Mr. Harkin is here, that generally accommodate up to 14 students, up to 14 students. Those tables will accommodate approximately six students, and those students will be seated every other seat facing every other, every other seat facing the other way, three feet apart. And it will be a 15-minute period, and the masks go back on. Right, Mr. Harkin? And exactly, exactly, should be disabled and seated. And tables, kids will get to choose their table the first week, but then they'll stay in assigned tables for cohorting during lunch. And we are continuing to provide increased ventilation in our cafeterias. Interschool athletics, sports, this has been a big discussion, it still is today. Some districts have not yet made decisions regarding this area or informed anyone what they're going to do. We made a decision on Friday, after discussing this issue where districts, both within our county, but also school districts that we compete with, within the suburban council, that we were going to recommend that high-risk sports occur. And those sports include football, volleyball this year. According to CDC, high-risk activities include sports and other extracurricular activities. When you're operating those programs in a high transmission zone, you either cancel those activities, or you make a determination that only those students that are vaccinated can play, or you implement testing or a combination of the above. We made a determination, I made a recommendation, that I felt that from a health standpoint, physical health, social emotional health, and a consideration for our goal to have the students engaged as much as possible, that there's a great benefit to participate in athletics, and we should offer the full benefit of all of our programs. We talked with other districts, and it is very, and we talked with our attorneys, and we received some guidance from the state education department. It remains unclear really whether or not school districts have the authority to not allow students to participate in extracurricular activities based on vaccination status. About three of the suburban council districts, of all of the districts, like if you're like 10 or 11, are requiring vaccinations. Most of the districts are either already started doing what we're doing, which is testing student athletes once per week mandatory as a condition of play, or they are in the process of considering how we're going to do that. So our program is aligned with April Parks, and Troy's likely to be aligned with what they're doing in North County, Chater, Saratoga, also Spah, and many other teams we play. We start that testing on Thursday tomorrow. Mr. Leonard is coordinating that schedule. So our teams will be tested on Thursday and Friday. There'll be a new schedule issued for next week. Our school nurses are coming in to do that testing in the Columbia High School cafeteria. And the testing, to the best of our ability, will be tailored around the sports practices and the games. Anything else, Mr. Harkin?
Yeah, we're also going to be looking at maybe in the morning, as they go off the bus, come in, they get stopped, and then go. At the school sometime, it becomes very important to be schooled and have to be in trouble at the nurse bell building. So, you know, but tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, Thursday, and next week's whole testing basically, you heard that. What makes me say that Columbia and Dallas, whether it's modified.
Once we get the modified programs started, again, modified football and volleyball would be high-risk. They will be required to test. Mid-September, we will do voluntary testing of the students in the moderately low-risk ones.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about athletics, and I really think that last year, Mr. Leonard, the team, coaches, staff, the athletes, parents, you know, we went through a whole process of athletics that involved practice in a different season, but also the testing that we did and all the different activities that we did to keep our athletes safe, our parents safe, spectators safe, was very successful. And I appreciate the work that they did, and we learned a lot of things from that experience that we're going to carry over to make sure our athletes, our parents, spectators, and our kids who interact with those athletes are safe as well. I think it's our greatest task to take to continue that work with our athletics program.
The yeoman share of the work to get testing off the ground last year, and again this year, and I transferred it to Mike because of the need to coordinate the schedule. Ms. McGrath is here, our director of PPS, and she oversees the nurses. She reached out to the nurses, nurses are coming in to do this in the summer, and as Mr. Leonard said, our elementary schools don't start till nine o'clock, our high school, our middle school starts 7:40, 7:50, and 7:10. Our nurses who volunteer to do this will start their day early, come over to high school, potentially to middle school, do the testing, and then that'll be done. And then they go to their regular assignments, once the school year starts. The district is not considering spectator limitations at this time. No districts that I know of that we compete against in our region are limiting spectators. However, we do have responsibility for contact tracing, making sure that we know everyone who is in attendance at the event. In the case of being informed by the county that the Department of Health has identified somebody that was at one of our events through their contact tracing process. So this year, rather than have lines of people waiting to sign in, we're going to use technology through a QR code. Our parents will be sent that QR code, and they'll be able to either print it or just hold their phone out to it on the computer. It'll take you right to an app form, same form that we used last year for all of our students. You can fill that out before you go to the football game. Natalie is doing a lot of work, Natalie is Mike's secretary, to make sure that that QR code is keyed into date and the event. It won't be a different QR code, it's a correct QR, wherever you go. It's the same QR, it's the same graph that dropped down there. But the backend of it being done by Natalie will be different inside of Natalie.
One thing was very successful, too, the parents who counted in and felt, I mean, we livestreamed a lot of events, not just athletics, but also, you know, kid events in schools, music events, things like that. That I think is a good practice to continue during this time, so.
We're hoping into that, yeah, we love it, very, 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 very good. So, and again, an indoor sports, we have face mask requirement. Music, and all that was brought up as a consideration in public comment. We initially were recommending that for chorus, general music singing at the elementary school level, and ban that we adhere to a six-feet social distancing. The music department discussed some of the concerns and constraints regarding the, really, in the case of the elementary school, the students would not be able to sing because they wouldn't be able to be six feet apart, even with wearing masks. The band, chorus spaces at the middle school and the high school will not accommodate some groups that weigh six feet. So we discussed this issue among many of the larger districts, suburban councils that have more students in these types of programs. And the large majority of those districts that are like East Bay, which have gone with a three-feet grounder. And simply to support music and the arts in the same way that we're supporting high-risk sports, to create conditions for which they can participate in those programs as they typically play. I called the board on this issue, and the board indicated majority support for this change. So I am recommending this change, go to three feet. The masks are required to be on at all times, including when the kids are singing. The bell hours are on the end of the instruments, will be required at all times. We are not sure yet whether or not we will be able to support live in-person concerts in the manner that we typically do. We would like to work towards doing that this year, and we have to do it. I've raised the issue of potentially testing students before the concert to make sure that everybody that's standing on those risers or sitting on that stage in a more congested environment is tested negative for COVID-19. I think that may be the way that we're going to have to go if we want to resume the normal concerts. Some of the virtual concerts that were done last year were extraordinary. Our music department really did a great job continuing to help offer these opportunities for kids. They would like to get back to doing their programs in a way that they feel is most beneficial, particularly for those kids who stay engaged in school because they love being seen by parents, no different than sports.
We need the recommendations from our music department, after the club, to certain of the school districts in the region, and taking the necessary steps, that's great. I saw you had a lot of workshops, much to the cost of.
Yeah, we've had opportunities to bring kids outside to do practice and to sing. There was also some musical and drama groups that did things outside last year.
My next question is an observation of a friend whose child is very into music. Says there's also masks that can be worn, especially for like trumpet and trombone players that have just a slip, so that they can still play their instrument and keep the mask on. And then when you remove the, the mask closes off. So if the music teachers want to look into that and possibly provide information to all families. So she says Mohammed is using it extensively in their music partner.
Thank you, we will research that, it's a good idea. Physical education remains at six feet apart. Indoor activities, students will have their masks on. This is very, very much the same thing as was done last year. And during the nicer weather seasons, outdoor activities will be encouraged. And I know in some cases, the curriculum timeframes have been modified to accommodate different activities that can be done outside, is that right, Mr. Leonard?
Right.
Anything to add?
No, it was great last year. You did a great job with what else at the Fox, sure, equipment. Work that crack is very successful.
Okay. School procedures, and this is part of Mr. Harkin and his staff's plan. We want to provide Columbia, the middle school, and the elementary school to be as specific as we can at this point. Recurring students to ride the bus, parent drop off, okay? We're all, including me, trained to try to get our kids early, worried about being late. In the case of parent drop off, we want students not to be dropped off by parents until at least 7:10. And that way, we can alleviate and kind of stage the entry into the high school. The student drivers come in between 7:00 and 7:10, parent drop off at 7:10, and that will also accommodate the busing.
Busing starts at 6:53, first student to fall at 6:53, so that you can go plenty of times there to force the number of students living in this space by.
Despite the steps being in the condition that they are at this moment, the lower steps were reported yesterday and today, rain has put us behind. We anticipate that those steps will be completed by September 9th. And so we do, we do anticipate that the main entrance will be available, and temperatures will be screened, last year using scanners that we have in place. Additionally, once the students are coming into the school, we want them to already have their masks on. We don't want them to be trying to get their masks on as they're coming through the door, possibly congesting the line going through the building. So if they come off the bus, I would imagine they can take their masks off for a few minutes. As they're walking, when they start to approach, they should put their masks on so that we can move them in quickly. That's our target, that's good, okay? They'll be socially distanced in line at the end of the building at three feet while waiting. Classroom procedures, all desks will be three feet apart, and students will be wearing masks at all times for the reception of a three-to-five minute mask break at the discretion of the teacher, only when the kids are sitting at their desks. If they're doing cooperative learning activity, or they're doing a project of some kind, or moving around rooms, teachers have the kids moving around the room, they will have those masks on. And when they transition out of the class, through the hallways, they will have those masks on. And so will our staff. And our employees have indicated that they support this standard. And I've made it clear to the employees that we can't have a different standard for kids and employees. We all have the problem too, where else are we wearing masks? One of the things that we want to make sure is that, you know, everybody is at this together. Lockers at this time will not be utilized at the middle school and the high school. A lot of lockers in themselves that concern us is the congestion of students around the lockers that could potentially have created a situation where students were well within three feet of one another and potentially exposed to COVID-19. Staggered release from classes to reduce congestion in the hallway. We're not going to let all of the kids out at first period at the same time. How's that going to work, Mr. Harkin?
Typically during the beginning of the year, we always allow nine figures to leave early because they have the ones that are in the building, which in fact can get lost. We'll probably start at seven minutes, two minutes prior to the transition, and every 30 seconds dismisses the last start of the ninth grade. We'll go from there, we'll analyze it, we don't know what's at this bay. Are kids really going to keep you right in the hallway? We have lots of monitors in the pencil that will be out there, our team is a great at it as well. So we just made keeping people right, keeping people moving. We don't have the one-way hallways or up and downs or the stairs. But if they keep right, they go right from 1:00 to 2:00. And like Mr. Simon said, they're not stopping in lockers. We hope that we're there and kind of spoke or anything like that all the way to each other and we'll get ready for the next class.
High school plan for physical education is the same as the district plan. Cafeterias, I talked about the cafeterias already. Point and point is the tables will be clean, the distance between in between rooms, in the cafeteria. And as soon as students are finished with lunch, they'll put their masks back on, and the tables will be cohort. Back off, we have a new design for parent drop off that I'll talk about just a bit. Parents will also be receiving some information, and potentially a video on how that drop off is going to work. Everyone who's had a child that went to Golf Middle School knows what happens. The traffic will back up from inside onto the school campus, out to Gilgan Road, sometimes down to 920. Last year, it was down to 920. We want the parents to drop their kids off beginning at 7:30 in the drop-off lane outside your main entrance. So right now, there's a temporary fence up there, like a drive-ride. That's only temporary, there's going to be more of a aluminum fence put in there that looks better and more, more attractive, something like you would see on a pool, okay? The kind of a, that kind of a style fence. The ability to drop kids off has been expanded from the front of the building all the way down through the parking lot. So you're going to be coming in, not at the first turn, you're going to be going all the way down Gilgan Road if you're going south. And you're going to come in where typically the buses will come in, and you're going to loop around, and you're going to go all the way as far as you can. And the cars can be backed up all the way, more room for parent parking, more segregation between staff parking and parent drop off and bus. It'll take a while for everybody to get used to, but this timing is very. It'll take a while for everybody to get used to, but this timing is very important to also make it work. Again, dropping off at seven thirty. The other issue is we won't have supervision out there until the concept. And we do have teachers that do, do it either outside greeting the kids. Sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders will come through different entrances as they did last year. Sixth graders will come through the main door. They're at least familiar with the building. So we want those sixth graders, the younger ones, to come to the main door. We'll have staff and administrators there to greet them, and we'll have a thermal scanner there. Seventh graders will come on the greenhouse side, which is the side near the barn and the garden. Come in at that entrance. And we had administrators out there and teachers out there to greet them. Last year we'll have the same this year. And eighth graders come through the cafeteria, get their temperature checked, and we go right out into the corridor. Masks are required in all cases in the buildings at three feet of social distancing. And everything else is consistent with the high school. Hallways will be monitored to assist students in transitioning class to class. And lockers will not be utilized. I attended part of the sixth grade orientation today. And the administrators emphasized the importance of what the kids will really need and what they don't need, the less they have to carry. Backpacks are being permitted at the middle school. At one point, the backpacks should be wheeled, restricted, you can put them on wheels, okay? In the case of students that may have problems carrying all that stuff, all they have to do is see the counselor, see the teacher. Carry their stuff on wheels with one of those backpacks. And everything else is pretty much the same cafeteria, individual seating, three feet apart, eating lunch within fifteen minutes, and masks sort of back on. Elementary, parent drop-off information will be provided in a letter if it hasn't already gone home from the principal, because every campus is a little bit different in terms of its ability to bring in the kids that are dropped off by parents. Temperature checks will continue to occur. Everything that I've already talked about is listed there. And everything is being done consistently across each of the five elementary schools. Physical education, same rule as it is at middle school and high school. Again, in the cafeteria, we're emphasizing three feet, hand washing, hand sanitation, cafeteria being cleaned, and this effective in between periods. Contact tracing. We had a discussion with the county department of health last week and again today, trying to find out how the contact tracing is going to work. Last year, the parameters for which were used by the county to determine whether or not students who were potentially exposed to somebody with a positive case of COVID-19 shifted as the community transmission level went up. And then it shifted as the community transmission level went down. An example I would give, in some cases, the county was saying, everybody that was on the bus, if you're riding a bus for more than an hour, you would be quarantined. Then they began to look at a more general parameter, less restrictive parameter, that who were the children sitting with, and maybe making adjustments. In the CDC guidelines, which rest of the county department of health says they will be following, there is an exception for students who are sitting in class wearing a well-fitted mask, who happen to be sitting near somebody within three feet who is identified as a positive case, who's also wearing a well-fitted mask. Those students will not be quarantined. So another good reason to wear a mask is if you are sitting with, close to somebody who was identified as a positive case, he had your mask on, or he had their mask on, he will not be subject to quarantine. So we anticipate fewer kids being quarantined because the county's following this guidance. Additionally, today, there was some new information that I want to share. And that's the liability. They've indicated that they will give us the information, right? And just have not received that yet. We'll make that available to our parents. Right now, CDC indicates that if you are vaccinated, you're an adult or a student eligible to be vaccinated, and you are in proximity to somebody who's been identified as a COVID-19 positive case, and you're identified as a potential close contact, you're vaccinated, and you were wearing a mask indoors, you can continue to come to school or work. You have to mask for fourteen days when you are in general public. So if you're out at Home Depot or Walmart or Market 32, you have to have that mask on for fourteen days because the county has informed you that you've been in close contact with somebody who's tested positive for COVID. But you can go to work or to school. It is recommended, not required, that on the third to the fifth day from which you have been identified as having come into contact with that person, that you get tested. And it's not quite. So what we've been advised is it's up to the school. In the case of an employee who recently was identified as a contact to another employee who tested positive for COVID-19 this week, we made the employee go get tested. Now testing is required for our district testing program. So that's another advantage that we're going to have to keep kids in school and keep employees working. Is if we have them tested, and they test negative, you can continue on and be in class and be at work. Other information regarding the contact tracing that we heard today was sports. The same principle applies to students that are participating in sports or vaccinated. If you were involved in a contact sport such as football, and it was the game Friday night, and you were vaccinated, and somebody else that was on your team or on the other team tested positive for COVID-19, they're going to want to know everybody that was on that field. If it's a practice, they're going to want to know the coaches, what were the drills, who were the groups, who was there? And they're going to, it's going to be a case-by-case kind of analysis. But if you are identified as having been in close contact with a person who was positive and you were vaccinated, you can continue to play. And we just, and we just monitor the symptoms. And you'll have to wear a mask even if it's outdoors. So kids can stay on the field, kids can stay in class, employees can stay at work if they're vaccinated. And we are required by CDC guidelines to be mobile vaccinated. We can't make people vaccinated. But there are certain advantages when it comes to whether or not you will be quarantined as a student, or you'll be quarantined as an employee, that have to do with whether or not you are vaccinated. Other information about busing and how that will work. They did talk a lot today about the need to individualize the situation. There really isn't going to be a hard and fast rule. It's going to be what was the circumstances, what was the activity going on, how long were you there, or are you vaccinated? Did you both have your masks on? It's going to be that kind of a process. I am right now going to serve as the contact person for the county contact tracing students. Marissa is going to serve as the contact person for employees. Mr. Cannon, our director of human resources. Once the county program for surveillance testing is implemented, depending on whether or not we're going to fully do this, our testing coordinator will be provided through arrangement with Questar Voces. Some of those duties related to contact tracing may be assigned to the testing coordinator. But for now, Marissa and I are going to be the point of contact. If I am notified by the county department of health that there's a positive case, as I was last year, many occasions when I called the coordinator, it was handling something else, my first contact will be the building principal and the nurse of that woman. And then they will start the process, gathering the seating charts, the schedules, and providing that information to the county. And the county makes the determination as to whether or not our students or staff members, I think, can be in touch with the contact. Additionally, we've been talking with our teachers union about the need to make sure that we can provide alternative instruction for students who are important. We're anticipating far fewer students being quarantined this year, in part because of the parameters that we're putting in place, the protocols, and also because of the mask wearing. And as we'll run through the grade levels, we're seeing about between the mid-50% and the high-60% of those kids that are eligible for vaccination, being vaccinated for the seventh grade through the 12th grade level. But we are going to continue to provide live stream and asynchronous assignments for kids in grades six through 12. So if we're notified, the county department of health order that a student needs to be quarantined, there may be a bit of a lag between the time that we're notified and the time that that live stream link is available for the students. Principal will make sure that the teacher is aware, teacher will make that link available. And that link will be live and active for the student to participate in class, the virtual live feed, up until the point where they are cleared to return to school. Then we would expect the student to come back to class and attend as normal. At the K5 level, we will be providing tutoring. We are not staffing a separate program this year. We'll have to arrange tutoring and live streaming at the K5 level for students, because of the number of times the classes are moving, to make sure of the activities that are done at elementary school levels really doesn't work that well. Testing, I talked about testing. We're still waiting for final approval of this, county and state level. We're waiting for delivery of enough. Right now, our district has approximately 3,000 antigen rapid tests that are good through the end of October. We're going to need more materials for testing. And we're also going to be able to get provided machines to run the tests right here in our schools. We'll be looking at surveillance testing as a voluntary program right now, in point-of-care testing. And we'll be discussing these issues with our nurses, administrators, and our families about how that is going to work once we know exactly when we're able to start it. The full remote program, which was talked about during the public comment. We made a determination based on the regulations and the guidance that we, we go through Questar three voces to provide a remote, full remote option for those students medically qualified. Medically qualified is not that well-defined by the state for us. So we have to evaluate these combinations on an individual basis. Dr. Kevin Albert is our pediatrician, who is on contact with the district to provide a number of services he does. He's been consulting with the district. He does sports, physicals for kids that don't have a primary care provider. He also has provided a lot of guidance since last year regarding COVID-19. The applications we developed in consultation with our attorneys to make sure that we were providing appropriate legal accommodation for our students, consistent with our district's board policy to provide for homebound instruction. What will happen when an application is filled out? It will be submitted to Dr. Albert, and he will review it. And he will likely communicate with the parent about the individual needs of that child. He may contact the child's primary care provider to learn a little bit more about the medical concern. And then he will give us a recommendation. And then we will move it based on his recommendation. The timeliness of this was difficult, heavily, because we found out early August that we weren't going to get anything regarding this from the New York State Department of Health. Our own commissioner of education was upset about that. Did the best that she could with the Board of Regents to provide schools what guidance they could provide. And that same guidance did require us to operate a full remote option for our families. As much as that option was beneficial during the period of COVID last year to many students, it would also presented a hardship for the majority of our students. Students that we felt needed to be in person to receive more direct support from our teachers and our support staff. We made changes throughout the whole year. We also found that in a large number of cases, for various reasons, students were not fully engaging in remote learning. Our absentee rates increased. Percentage of students at the middle school and high school level failing courses increased. We presented that information to the board at a meeting, made adjustments to provide the support necessary to help those kids. But overall, as a district, we made an assessment this year that the large majority of our children would benefit academically and socially, emotionally from fully re-engaging in school. We also recognize that there are a lot of anxieties out there on the part of our parents. And we want to work with parents to address those issues. But we feel that the large majority of the kids who are not approved through this process should be physically in our class, where we can engage with our peers, where you can provide more direct support for them, where we don't deal with the challenges of remote learning from a technical standpoint. We provided a lot of equipment last year and even delivered Wi-Fi boosters. I forgot what you call them, kajits, to people's homes. There were a lot of kids that despite the family's best effort, our best effort, could not drop the Google Meet. They were unable to go to Mac every day. There were family schedules and structures within families that made it challenging. I've got to go to work. My spouse has to go to work. I'm going to leave the little, the older sister in charge when virtual Wednesday comes, or when there's a shift to remote learning. And for some kids, yes, it worked out great. Hybrid worked out great, and for remote, it worked out. For many kids, it was a struggle, and only a screen across the nation. So CDC, US Department of Education, New York State Education Department, and even those in the health field made a determination that in-person learning was critically important, not only to address the academic needs and the curriculum, but the mental health needs of a number of our children, and to support families. There are some families who have indicated that the remote learning worked wonderfully for them. We appreciate that. We would encourage people to submit this application. And we will, we will take your needs seriously. I can't guarantee that they would be approved, that there's going to be a medical view provided to me. But I understand the anxieties. We're doing everything we can. We're doing everything we can to keep the kids safe. You have my assurances of that. And I know that the board has made that a priority, but also engagement of the kids is not a priority. Many kids have done nothing after the remote learning, despite the great job we tried to do.
Jeff, there's a lot of your comments too in regards to that in general. Later on, our agenda is also the federalities, the government, the government is encouraging in-person, obviously in many districts around the country, several leaders support the term of in-person instruction, the building infrastructure, providing social, emotional, mental health supports, negative supports for students. Because we know that it's been difficult for a lot of people to re-engage. Our kids, obviously have apprehension, parents have apprehension. And importantly, the thing we talk about extensively is as a board with demonstrations, how do we welcome people back? Ease the leaders, reconnect, and make this the vibrant, worthy that it was, and let the people do the best we can to make sure that stay with the students. So the families still have businesses with kids back. So that's going to go on with the board and the district administration to make that happen. Utilize the resources that we will provide on the state, the federal.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. We'll be hearing about those investments later on tonight when Mrs. Meyer gives her report of the federal grants of assistance to the state to provide that kind of support. That's what we want to describe. School events. We are in the process of developing our calendar. Mr. Adams, developing the calendar. It's going to be certainly in the draft by the end of the week to the administration. There are some events that are traditional events that we put on a calendar, hoping to have in person, such as open houses, the apple races, which are outside, other welcome back events. We may need to do those a little bit differently depending on what happened to the COVID-19. We may need to look at capacity of the number of parents. For example, I might be having a bad good staff. We might need to stagger schedules so that not everyone K5. an event, with staff, we might need to stagger schedules so that not everyone, K5, for example, is coming to the building at the same time, we're talking about that. Parent conferences, okay? It's rare in education that everybody agrees on one thing, right? This is one that everybody agreed on within our district. The level of parent participation in parent conferences increased as a result of offering this convenient option that the Google Meet already has. Teachers liked it, parents liked it, they were able to share the same type of information. Many of the teachers use their document cameras to share group breaks, and standard-based workers, and the type of information that the board and the district has developed over the last couple of years. So we're going to maintain those as an accommodation for the parents. Additionally, if a parent wants an in-person conference, they can request that, and our teachers will accommodate that. Outside groups use of facility, you see the junior group doubles out on the field. Last spring, we started permitting use of outdoor facilities. Right now, my recommendation is that we continue to permit indoor use of our facilities, and in the process of the forms being submitted to request use of the facilities, we have people sign off on the guidance that we all wear masks, we're maintaining appropriate distance when we use in the building, give us the data on the capacity, how many people are going to be at the event, and to put some controls in place to be able to permit community use of the facilities. The Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, other groups want to use our libraries or our cafeteria, as long as they abide by our safe parameters that we follow within our school, I think it's okay. There isn't a Department of Health or New York State Education mandate for this area, and again, as Mr. You know, I said, we're focusing on engagement, both for the students but also for our community. And face masks must be worn at any indoor events, and will be optional for outdoor events. Vaccine is widely available in our region, the county department of health, everyone they say if you want us to put together a special, if you want us to bring us the vaccine bus, the van over to your district, we'd be happy to accommodate it, going to the Alpham Fair, they're going everywhere they can go, if I had stewards to provide vaccinations, possibly now that Pfizer vaccine has been fully approved by the FDA, we may see increases in the vaccination levels of our students who are eligible. I heard today that Johnson &amp; Johnson is seeking approval for a booster, Pfizer has already been approved for a booster, so we're just sharing the information. We recognize that it is ultimately the decision of the person that's most important in the child's life, it's the parent, consult with their primary care provider to make their own determinations, but we are encouraging guys to have those conversations. We will continue to update and communicate once school starts regarding COVID-19 cases within the district. Not required as of yet, we probably will, the report cases to the state as we did last But we will update the community when we do a case as we did last year, and we also provided the general information of the number of students or staff members that would impact by quarantines. It's a good way to monitor and let the community know what's happening. Not one case that we had last year among students, not one case that we had among our employees, to be traced back to infection spread within the schools. A large part, I believe that was because of the masks and the social distancing, keep in mind that we didn't have the vaccine until December. We did have only half the kids in the other day, we are increasing the number of kids within the building, but we're also maintaining many of the same protocols, including the temperature checks that aren't required. So I think we're going to see that our district can continue to provide safety for the students or employees and our community. One of the things you continue to talk about, and some of the question why we have to have some of these protocols, is we're not only responsible for the safety of the children and employees, but because of infection spread, asymptomatic infection spread, we don't want a child or a staff member going home and infecting their family. The county did report today that most of the spread that we're seeing is within families, okay? Somebody gets it within the family, that they've ever had a situation where they're at close proximity, typically, I mean, because of a rapid spread of development, right? Typically, everybody in the family's getting it. Again, the numbers are up to about 4.4% today. We talked about student engagement. Our goal is to put these safety parameters in place so that our students can engage in instruction and extracurricular activities, we can monitor attendance. We're not going to be heavy-handed about it, we are going to hold students to expectations if we're hiring two additional social work positions this evening, specifically to address in one case, the mental health needs of our students, in another case, to engage with families, to help families work with us to identify strategies that can help kids transition back to school, particularly those kids that, whose attendance declined last year, including their virtual attendance. We're providing additional academic and emotional support, extra teachers to provide academic intervention in reading and math, 10 positions at the elementary school level, two and a half additional positions at the middle school level, and we're also at a meeting with the county department of health today, mental health today, to arrange for, final arrangements for a satellite mental health plan that the county will provide one day a week at our middle school, and they've agreed to staff it in such a way that it can be at the high school as well. So we have a day at the middle school to start, and half a day at the high school, help our kids transition. We do have a lot of kids that do have anxiety, that is a nationally trend, this happened prior to COVID, it's been exacerbated by COVID, school phobia has been exacerbated by COVID, and we want to work with families to help support the children to be successful, be back in class, be comfortable, that they're going to be successful, they're going to make friends, they're going to have good relationships with both their teachers and their peers. Additionally, one of the things that we could always emphasize is, early, if we act early, we know there's a problem, we can fix it. If we wait, and it grows, and it grows, and it grows, then we're not able to intervene. And we, like parents, know that problems will be solved at the level of the teacher first. So if there's something that's not connecting right to your child, whether it be in classroom or there's something going on with your child that can impact your ability to be successful, the first line of communication should be right to that teacher. The teacher has the ability to make adjustments, provide supports. If it's not able to be resolved, or it's not being resolved to satisfaction of the child or the parent, then we go to the principal. The principal intervened many times last year when we received a concern about the amount of time, for example, that students were spending on a computer. Our principals were right on it, they researched it, they talked to the teacher, they made some adjustments. In some cases, they learned that situations existed where we needed to bring the kids in, I do want in-person support. If it's not resolved at the building level, you can contact me, Mr. Q, Ms. Cannon, or one of, Mrs. Wager, one of our central office administrators, and then ultimately Board of Education. We encourage people to use the chain of communication if you want that, problem will be solved quickly, and we don't want problems to fester or linger as we engage our kids back in school. So tonight, we're having a board meeting. Tomorrow, during the day, I'll be meeting with the elementary teachers and staff to discuss this plan. I'll be meeting with the middle school and high school staff together, two different meetings tomorrow afternoon. We have a virtual meeting that will be open for the elementary parents tomorrow evening. Monday, we'll be meeting with the middle school, Thursday, we're meeting with the high school parents. Our administrative team at each of those levels and all our central office team will be available, panel, to discuss the issues. We'll be using that tool that we used last year, thought exchange, for people to be able to submit questions and concerns. Email, we always try to be as responsive as possible to email. If people cannot make these meetings, we're recording these meetings, and we will send them out to everybody in the school community. Our first day of school is September 9th, and our staff starts reporting on Tuesday for professional development and superintendent conferences. So I'm sorry about the length of the presentation, this is probably the most important topic right now, that is on everyone's mind in the educational community, and we have every confidence that our health and safety and our ready plans for kids will grow very, very quickly.
Okay, thank you for signing. Any final questions or comments, board members? That was a very comprehensive thorough review of the thing. One of the things I'm really pleased to see about the education plan with both staff and parents, the process that we go through the thought exchange generates a lot of questions, great questions, and for me, the feedback from the parents, through those forums, is critical and really answers a lot of things that will help other parents stand out, and I think that development with people who are these types of things is epic, too, to gather those frequent FBS questions, so parents can refer those, who may have missed things, they have similar questions. Our website, very top, in bright yellow, that's all on the front, all the things are posted, and as we gather that information, again, this process of getting information, getting saints, seeing other entities, making recommendations, being very late, and we didn't want to do things early, and then have to shift constantly to get that information. So, you know, it's a challenging, delicate balance for us to be able to see this as a board, with the administration, providing recommendations and information, and also, you know, the school right around the corner, we have a lot of districts doing very similar things, but I think the amount of detail and information shared tonight was excellent, and it answers a lot of questions regarding what's occurred. And of course, with any plan, first day of school happens, right, things have to shift. Frame is all right?
That's right.
And we just adjust. One of the things that we found when we brought the elementary students back last year was that we had to shift a little bit, and make some change, make some adjustments, and that's the, that's the staff, the administration, the people here, to make those shifts, and just making those shifts for the parents, so they don't have to be one type of student. Anyway, we're responsive as things shift with COVID, improve, get better, it's the same, hopefully that works, we'll have to deal with those changes as the year goes. So I appreciate the input of the administration, the principals, and everyone who wrote, purposefully to me, this is the plan possible.
Mike, just one quick question. In the, as a hypothetical, if the government changed the rules or changed the thing with spikes, how difficult will it be for you to revert back to a hybrid or some other model?
Honestly, not very difficult, based on the experiences of last year. We are discussing contingencies, where teachers, for example, right now, remember SRP, you know, we have the technology, do it, our teachers are going to train in the technology platforms as well as the equipment. Logistically, it's not going to be as favorable, as it was when we first did some of those things in September of last year. We're all hoping that that moment doesn't occur. We don't want to go back to a model that has larger percentages of students, of captive age and virtually, we couldn't do it. In answer to that question, we also are anticipating scenarios where you might have exposure in school, and you might have to shift just one class to full remote, as we had to do, I think we did that at Red Mill last year, in second grade. Was it second grade only?
Yes.
Right. We have to have the ability to do that. We could have a whole wing of a school, or designate areas of a school that have to shift, whether it be on the building, whether it be on the whole district. So even if there is a state that we're actually evolving, we could have a situation where the county brings our attention, that there's an infection spread that requires short periods of time in which you might have to shift, and we're prepared to handle that. That's what we're trying to avoid.
No, I agree. I think that's a really important thing to say for the community, though, that if we've learned anything in the last 18 months, is to have contingencies to plan for the unexpected. And again, I've said this about the drive here, I looked again this evening, the students wrote on the bridge, "Think positive." And I think, at least my position on the board, I'm trying to think positive, I'm trying to create scenarios that the students can really excel in, because, and the excel means something different to everyone. Everyone has a story with COVID, everyone has a fear, and I think, Mike, you said something that was kind of interesting. We've been so focused on the students and bringing them back and everything, and maybe we should take a look at how do we put the community of these students, and some parents, maybe at some virtual workshops, so that they can explore their own issues, because everyone is impacted differently, I'm not going to make an assessment, but I'm hopeful and I'm positive, and the reason I'm really positive is we have a new governor, and she spoke in her speech, majority about education, and I think that's the first time we've heard that in a long time. So I'm going to be positive that through her leadership, because we've been basically trying to pile the ship through FAW for at least the last eight, nine months with Supreme Global, at the helm with no guidance, and we are the last people to know, and I understand the community frustration and being delayed in a lot of the information, but we're, you see it on the news, and if it doesn't come through the right channels of communication, we're bound by decree to follow the writing, and the writing doesn't always capture the public sentiment, so I'm asking the community for some patience while we go through this period, but I am hopeful and positive. So I thought that the presentation this evening represents countless hours of work, countless hours of studying by my fellow board members during the weeks up to this, and trying to get a handle on something that our top doctors and scientists throughout the world can't even agree where it came from. So I really support bringing the kids, if they can be here, back to school, getting them engaged, because I think Mr. Barkin said, the kids are really compliant because they want to be here. They don't want us to rule this out, they want to do it right, and we owe it to them to do it right, so that they can be here. They've lost too much. So thank you, and thank you for your public comments as well, I appreciate it.
Do I have one more question? I just have a quick question, I may be premature, regarding fall sports, are you elaborating more on your next report to incorporate them into one report?
No, sure, wait a minute.
Okay, it's on the agenda.
Oh, I think I, I think I went over some of those, I was planning on talking about.
All right.
Well, I pretended to do that, but I guess it's there.
My question is regarding COVID testing. I understand and can appreciate the athletics department having to schedule according to the teams, and I understand the nurses coming in to do the actual testing. Who will be responsible for documenting those tests, keeping all the references?
It's a great question. There was a training last year provided by Quest R3 policies to various people that the district identified to be recording, initial recording on a formulary spreadsheet, right, that is aligned with data that the state needs. There's a system called Clarus DCLRS that every COVID test administered to New York State, the person, the graphic information and the test result has to be recorded. Quest R will take that information from the district, in our case, our data department, will receive that information from the test site, which is being, which is a team doing that recording that information. doing that recording and information testing, that's what the team wants us up to, I believe, alright? Okay? They'll record that on the spreadsheet, on the physical sheet, and then it goes to Todd. Todd goes out the spreadsheet, and the spreadsheet goes to the people that are under supervision by Questar, maybe we'll upload it to the state board.
Okay, so those test results will go from the nurses to the SRPs to report that?
No, the SRP is on their onsite, doing some report, Molly, can you explain this kind of better?
Yes, the testing team consists of a nurse, a timekeeper, and a results person. So, it's a three-person team that's tracking the results and logging it into the spreadsheet.
Okay, so that will stay right out of the athletic office?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then those are the state.
So, I think just, I'm not sure how the athletic department could add that into setting everything else, so I'll contact them.
We just, we're agreeing with the testing schedule. Right, because you can apply it back to the standard rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your question. Anyone else? That concludes our next reports. The next item on the agenda is universal pre-K discussion item A.
I'm going to let them make it right, because you've heard me for about 15 minutes now.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. As you remember, back in the beginning of July, when we issued a request for proposal to approximately 50 providers in the rest of the county area, we received two responses, one via the response state and a second subsequent to that. At the same time, I also contacted Questar III regarding the universal pre-K program poster that they have available to us. The current rate, 2122, for the pre-K program at Questar is $177,063. And that is for an 18.11 classroom, that is 18 students, one teacher, one TA. Currently, we have room for two classrooms at Red Mill Elementary School, so we would be able to service 36 students at Red Mill. That would, the total cost for that would be 35,4,126 dollars. Because we work so closely with Questar, we know the types of programs they have, we know the types of, we know the quality of the staff that they hired, I am proposing that we move forward with Questar program. In light of that, I contacted Jason Breslin, who is the director of Office of Early Learning for New York State, because there is a, there is a requirement in the universal pre-K program that you have a 10% set aside to collaborate with community-based organizations. He assured me that since we went through the RFP process properly, Questar III does, is considered a community-based organization, therefore, we have met the set aside requirement. The, I also confirmed with Questar's state aid planners and reading in their rescue plan that pre-K is an allowable expense under the American Rescue Plan. So, the state aid that we will receive, we can receive $5,400 per student. And the cost per student for Questar is $9,837. So, I am proposing that we put the balance, approximately $4,500 per student, into the American Rescue Plan application. And I was able to include that for two years, which we will see when we go, when we get into the review of the applications.
One thing I would like to add, recently this week, at the federal level, while I was in the past, yeah, the president of this state told us funding for two years, which would be three and four years. The state is also indicating, the state, moving towards full pre-K funding. So, one of the questions is kind of about sustainability, because we're going to use the RFP program. Well, we can't necessarily predict that full funding will come to us. Right now, the environment is such that the probability of that is higher than it has been in many years. Typically, high rate, high needs difference when they receive pre-K funds. Where our average wealth district received those funds this year. I think there is a direction over the state about whether or not we'll change for all districts. And the age of all the pre-K students, if you can't run the program, either funding rises up. And then in fact, you know, fewer students that are being brought into the quarter of students. So, my recommendation would be go with the Questar model, but also go with as long as we have funding.
So, the next steps in this process, we would like to start a pre-K program as soon as possible. However, there is an application process with the state that we are going to need to file. And we don't have to wait to start the process, though, in the meantime. Questar III has established universal pre-K program currently with several other districts. So, there is going to be a need for them to hire personnel, hire staff. So, this may take a little, take a little while. The other part of that is this is universal pre-K, so it is completely random selection, participation. So, we will have to formulate an application for parents to submit. And then I suggest that we randomly select those 36 students publicly so that everyone is aware of the process that's taking place.
Any questions, concerns about moving forward with the pre-K program? Hold on, you're ready?
I can't wait.
Signing, before those people come? Of course, obviously, you know, even though Questar goes to pre-K program, the same protocol is used by the district, both seems to apply here. We'd be very proud of that as partners in that program, we're close enough to safety purposes. So, it sounds like we're good, we'll follow with that, thanks. And then I think, we were going to talk about before, these are federal funding to supplement. We evaluate, see what kind of data we have, whether we should continue that. It's depending on how things improve with the federal state level, in terms of funding for those programs. That's a big question for you, because it's a significant investment in resources to go beyond two-year current funding services. Next discussion item is the federal funds. Were they included in that, or anything else?
Thank you. Just a quick overview, and Mr. Gordon, if you could possibly pull up the Carissa and RFP memo. I want to just remind everyone of the amount of funding that we have available to us in federal funds. There are two separate funding sources. First is the Coronavirus Response and Leave Supplemental Appropriations Act. That's a mouthful, so we call it Carissa. And that amount is $3,961,68. It is broken down into two separate funding sources and one application that needed to be filed. The application for this, these funds was due on July 15th, and it has been filed. The two funding sources of the Carissa funds are GEAR II, which have a Governor's Emergency Educational League Fund in the amount of $450,921, and the Carissa Esser two, or I'm sorry, Esser Fund, which is $3,509,247. Reason these are called two is because, you will recall, last year, we had the CARES Act that was also split into GEAR and Esser Funds. The next, the next available federal funds is the American Rescue Plan. That amount is $3,845,34. That application is due by August 31st, and my hope is to be able to submit it tomorrow, actually. If we are on an agreement on everything. The American Rescue Plan has a couple of more restrictions requirements that we didn't have in the Carissa plan. That is that a portion of the funds may be used toward after-school programs in the amount of $102,000. We also need to spend at least $102,000 on after-school programs and approximately $500,000 on learning loss. So, we will see that as we're going through the application, that we are addressing those types of needs. The, what I'm going to present to you tonight are, as part of the application, I have to file budgets, which are very detailed budgets by budget code, specific as to how we're going to spend the money and how the amounts are calculated. So, these are quite long, but if you could go into the Carissa GEAR II application that's the $450,000 that I spoke about. Now, we have talked about these federal funds several times. They've been discussed in working. We had a special oral education meeting on June 29th, where we were looking for input, review of all of the ideas that we were talking about. So, I tried to incorporate everything we've talked about into these applications. And I tried to spread the money out for the next two years. And in one case, for summer school, for third year, to the 24th, 25th school year. So, we will see a repeat sometimes on some of this money. But if we're looking at the GEAR II application, the first category is the professional staffing code. We are looking to have, we're looking to have a TA expand the hours at the High School Learning Resource Center in MAP and ELA, so I've included those in there. We also, as part of the original budget for 2122, we will remember, we included in there 2.5 elementary AIS teachers, 1.0 AIS reading teacher at the middle school level, and 0.7 AIS teacher at the MAP, in MAP, at the middle school level. So, I've included those in there as well. And that's going to, keep in mind, that's going to free up a little bit of money in the general fund because we were coming up with a lot of ideas. And it turns out, we had more ideas than even money. So, what I'd like to do is try to, and some of those ideas, I wasn't able to actually put a dollar amount on. So, I wanted to put into this application more solid numbers. We went to the next page, the next category is supplies and materials for this fund. We are looking to expand our CTEP program to the grade eight level, so we're going to need a smart, smart board there. And we're also going to need some furniture, some desks and chairs. And then the employee benefits are, I calculated the social security, the TRS, the ERS, and health insurance on those salaries that I mentioned. So, that's, that's what makes up the GEAR II application of $450,921. Next, we have the Carissa Esser II application. This is the other 3.5 million dollars that, this is the other 3.5 million dollars that totals the 3.9 Carissa application altogether. So, as far as professional salaries go, we talked about hiring the 10 early intervention specialist teachers at the elementary level, so I propose in there. We are going to have an after-school assistance program at the elementary level, which will be two hours a day, two days a week. And I'm assuming a 80-week program by elementary buildings. I included in there the budget for a grade eight teacher, the CTEP program. We are looking to hire our response to intervention coordinator, which will be a teacher on a special assignment. Teaching assistants, District 5, we talked about 15 teaching assistants, and a family and student engagement specialist, who we expect to be a social worker, who can work with our families and our students to re-engage families and students and make people feel more comfortable coming back to school and helping improve our attendance. The purchase services. We purchased a software program called Renaissance Inc., which is a screening tool which will help us identify ELA and MAP learning gaps. And that's very important, especially in these programs, because a lot of the application has to do with, how are we going to assess the need and monitor the need and respond to it? Another program that we are looking into and we expect to re-implement as we've had it in the past is the Efind program. That is a program that one of our teachers at the high school took, took a lead in it a couple of years ago. And we weren't able to sustain it, but I put it back into the program this year. This is $10,000 that's in the program, and that is for four sessions per year for three years. We are also looking to purchase a radar transponder system from the Student Pointer, which is a program that will allow us to monitor our bus ownership. And that's going to help us if in the need we need to contact racing. We are also looking to upgrade our Heartland system, which is a mosaic, and that is going to assist us with providing an online free and reduced application process. And we are also looking to increase our K, K-12 library collection specifically for book titles regarding social functional issues. And that will be at each building. Under the supplies and materials category, and you're going to see that that's a lot of money here, but when we're applying federal grants, supplies and materials are anything under $5,000 would be my price. So, in here, I have included our replacement for our one-to-one phone box. And as we had talked about, we have been approved for smart schools money as well, but that does not have an end date on it, so I'd like to hold on to some of that money and use this money, which does have an end date. I am also budgeting in here for some supplies in order for us to start an archery program at the middle school and high school level. We ordered some Genesis compound bows, some arrows, targets, and we did this all through the national associations, national archery program in schools. Next is the employee benefits, and again, that, those are the employee benefits that I calculated as part of the salaries that we've been offered. As far as equipment, in upgrading the Heartland system for the online free and reduced application process, we had to purchase some hardware, so that's in there. And we are also looking to enter into a Psonics piece program where we can replace our Psonics throughout the district on the regular basis. So, you will see the budget summary page, that just breaks down by category, and that adds, that totals the $3,509,247. So, that equates that accounts for the $3.9 million of the Carissa funds. Now, the last application is the application that I, I want to discuss tonight. This is the application I would like to submit to SED tomorrow. And that is the American Rescue Plan. That is $3,840,000. So, as part of that, under the professional salary code, we would like to have a 0.2 social studies teacher to assist our students specifically in the area of preparing and for the COVID studies, regions, exam. I was able to include that for two years, for the 2122 school year and 2224. We also talked about a fitness and nutrition program, which we will need to organize for that. I included a budget salary in there for two years as well, 2122, 2224.
I just want to mention on that one, we, we discussed, there's so many different options for that. So, we've certainly budgeted for it, we haven't, we haven't hired anybody to do that yet who would encourage to look at what outside services, consultant services might be available. We're still studying, so we put it in the budget, but we haven't moved forward on anything related to that expense. So we put it in the budget, but we haven't moved forward on anything related to that expense.
We are also implementing an after-school tutoring program at the high school and the middle school. I've included a budget for that. We expect to have two years of yoga for two hours a day, four days a week, for forty weeks, or subjects, that's how I budgeted it, for both the high school and the middle school and the state general line. I did that for two years as well. We talked about hiring a social worker to help with our mental health clinic. I've included that for two years. And I've also included additional tutoring services for students returning to school. They may not have the ability to stay after school or maybe other circumstances. So I put it down, fifty hours of tutoring services for both this year and next year, including them there. And this is an example of what I've talked about. While everything is not included in the application that we talked about, this frees up money that is already in the general fund. Summer school, part of this, these funds are to be used for summer school. So we are able to, with the assistance of these federal funds, at summer school for, this year, we went through a Questor program. So I'm proposing in here that we have summer school for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. And then this just talks about the tutoring programs at both high school and the middle school again, for the following year, twenty-two, twenty-three. We have, we talked about in the previous application, ten AIS teachers, district five, for elementary level. And we also talked about sustaining those. And we talked about possibly slotting those into positions where there are retirements. So in this application, the twenty-two, twenty-three year, I included five of those AIS physicians. And then there's another small amount for support writing that needed to be done in rewriting curriculum for P V. As far as support staffs out is gone, we need coordinators for a lot of these programs that we talked about. So we need a coordinator for the after-school tutoring program. I've also included in here the registered nurse, twelve-month registered nurse that we talked about. I've included in here salary for a monitor to help with the technology health desk program that we're implementing. We're going to need a coordinator for the traffic speed program that we are working on through the Nassau Sportsman Fund. We are going to need a school coordinator for the archery program, as well as project adventure. And I tried to include these coordinator positions in here for one or two years. Also included support staff for summer school for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. And I've included the cost of maintenance subs to help us continue to clean and disinfect in the manner we have it. As far as purchase services go, we have a contract with Westlake County Department of Mental Health for substance abuse counselor, and I have included an amount in here for twenty-one, twenty-two, as far as twenty-two, twenty-three. I've also included a pre-K right now for storage pods. We have a lot of furniture in the district that we can no longer use at this time due to social distancing requirements. So we, we have storage pods where, and those are costing about eighteen thousand here. So I've included that in there. We have Capo E A T program available for our staff. This offers mental health and other resources for our staff. I've included that for two years. I've included the maintenance agreement on the Student Finder, they upgraded the transponder system that I talked about. I've also included another year of maintenance on the Heartland Oase program that I talked about as well. As part of, due to COVID, we are having to recondition our athletic equipment quite a bit. Last year, as you know, we had to change some seasons. I'm hoping not to do that this year. But in an effort to keep our equipment clean and safe, I've included some reconditioning expenses in there. I just estimated that twenty thousand dollars we saw last year. I've also included a professional development speaker that we had on opening day. Christina Cipriano will be talking about leaning into social and emotional learning into support, support, oh, I'm sorry. Leaning into social and emotional learning to support whole school, right? As part of our supply and materials, as I said, we are storing a lot of our collaborative furniture, but we had to order a lot of new furniture and bring the students back. Last year, we, we used a lot of the desks in the cafeterias. And now, and we were able to do that because we had half the students we had at the time. Now we're bringing everyone back. So we had to order a lot of furniture, which is already been ordered and delivered. We have, we also plan to order more of the father misters, which help to disinfect the buildings and the buses. We are looking to also purchase desktop computers to start to, to supply new classroom teacher computers. We are also planning to order air purifiers and train. These are large air purifiers that we expect to locate in key areas such as the nurses' offices. And we talked about pre-K. Along with pre-K, we have to staff these, we have two furnished base rooms. So I've got some furniture in there for pre-K, some supplies and some furnitures. I've also put money in here for just various cleaning supplies, the U V supplies. We are ordering thermal scanners to assist with moving the students into the building more efficiently. Some traffic speed program supplies, I don't know what they are or if they are, but I included twenty-five hundred dollars in there for that. And then the employee benefits, again, the same benefits that I calculated on those salaries that are included. One category that is included here is for our pre-K program with OSIS, and I was able to do that for two years. So as I said, the excess balance that is not covered by state aid, I, I estimated it to be forty-five hundred dollars for thirty-six students for this year. Next year, I increased that. And the reason I increased it is because my understanding is that New York State used some of their federal money to help with the pre-K state aid that we're seeing this year. So I expect that state aid number to go down next year. So I increased the amount into the American Rescue Plan. And then finally, it's just the budget summary, and that adds up to the three million eighty-four thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars. So we talked about a lot of initiatives, and we're still considering all of those initiatives. And we're working on all of them. And one thing to remember with this is I, I was trying to formulate a budget with the best information that I had. We can subsequently, once the application is approved, we can file amendments. We can move things around within categories and, and different ideas. So that's a lot of information. Are there any questions, fun ideas, then? I did want to mention a couple of the things that we talked about that are not included here. One of the things we are to see, and I need some more information on that in order to, in order to be able to know what I'm talking about as far as the numbers go. The food for the MAs program, we talked about that, and there was a lot of conversation about, should we be paying a stipend? How much of a stipend should we be paying? I did, we jumped over to districts, we did the Questor region, and I only had one other school district that had anything similar to this. And they are paying their food service director a stipend, and I calculated over twenty thousand dollars. So that was, I didn't feel like we were comparing apples to apples there. Another thing we talked about was technology for the live streaming. And I was not able to include that in there. And we also talked about GCC. So these are some of the things that are not in these applications. However, it's not that we've forgotten these programs. We will continue these programs. There's a lot of money that ICS bring up in the general fund. And some of that money that we're freeing up in the general fund, we want to talk about, possibly establishing a capital reserve in the future that can assist us with our future capital projects and lower the amount of debt that we need to issue. Have any questions, concerns, ideas?
Ton of information.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Very thorough.
Very thorough, very detailed on this.
I think that it covered a lot of programs we discussed, it gives us capacity, it gives the general funding to set the budget to explore other opportunities. And then it goes into amendments and shift that we need to go into this application, or with the application process as it stands. And then, I would ask that, you know, if you can react to this. We had before, we're members of the, some of the things that maybe you thought should be included or quickly put down low. One question, we got to take back today, is that we're curious to know how much money we actually bring up from the general fund. Just to go off that seat down the road.
Absolutely, yeah, I think we've got that to you. I didn't have that very recently, but I think we've got that to you. And also, we are required to publicize these plans. So once the funds are approved, I suggest we put them on our website. And we also, specifically with the American Rescue Plan, are required to update this every six months. So we will formulate a schedule for that. I would anticipate that we'll be doing it more than every six months.
So plan accordingly, is what I'm saying, because this is the same information. Any, any final questions on the discussion? I do want to go back to, I didn't have any, not long on the minutes for August eleven. Any questions, revisions, or comments on the question? Not any motion to approve, I think. John and Dan Brown, second. Joanna, all in favor? Those have seen, approved. Moving on to the regular business, approval of programs for residential facilities, any questions or comments? So we're going to motion to approve that. John, second. Joanna, all in favor? Approved. Next is the e-screen watch, just by safety plan. We have a period, this is still here. And then, yes, our agreements, anything to comment, any comments?
Oh, we got it.
Okay, so we're going to reverse all the plan. I'm glad we looked at our local town, county, community, and Pasonos. Any questions or comments about that? Need a motion to approve? John, second. Frank, all in favor? Collier High School driver education, a recommendation to propose one for the fall. We clarify.
We've been operating the model that we used in the summer. We did it by spring, we did it over the summer. We provide the mobile classroom-based instruction for students through a new format. And then there's a driver's checklist that has to be implemented by the parent. The parent has to drive their student and certify that those skills and that review. And then those that submitted to, to Tucker. And he can house that information, verifies that everything, that will be part of the vehicle requirements and sets up to the state. I've got a server of that program this summer, for a sixteen-year-old. I can test to the requirements being rigorous, I can test to the process working for our kids. And maybe commit it one more time, follow through this. Another piece of this is, Mr. Tucker asked me, we've been, we've struggled over the years to find the driver, the driver's special portion. We struck it, we had, she's been working very, very good. Mr. Tucker, remember, probably asked me, you guys, either Mr. Tucker was going to go send me a sweet bill and get certified to take that portion out, boy, he got his certification approved, sent to him this weekend. So he will also be able to do the classroom portion now. It's a one-way rate of retirement, young man, so. We have, we have to do that too, as well as other things. So that was driving school right now, which was usually for not be approved to do it. They don't have the ability to do it right now. We've been one of the only districts, one of the two districts in the entire region, offering drivers that students can see communication with parents that appreciate it. So we're recommending that we do it at least one more time with this model for the fall. About a hundred and forty-five dollars per, roughly, per family, depending on the number of kids having fall.
Thank you. No, no district respect, because he's trying to. Good. We have motion approved, the fall, yeah. Captain, second, all in favor? Bus purchase reserve funding in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, clarification there? Is there anything written on it? And on the bus purchase reserve?
Just quickly, this is the bus reserve that we have in order to purchase buses. That way, we don't have to borrow for them at June thirtieth. We have one point one million dollars in there. We plan to purchase approximately seven hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of buses this year. Who replenish that each year, we try to put two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars in there. Plus, we put the state in the bus purchases in there.
Right, and the doors as well. So the motion approved that, there's no questions? Joanna, second. Frank, all in favor? Approved. Physician services, driver quizzes, the shift from test practice, we're looking to well-naltering care, access compliance, any questions regarding that? The motion approved that. Deanna, second. Frank, all in favor? Approved. I keep listening with us, Cheryl, so. I mean, the better. This was a very, very well-received, next item, the tax rate system. I hope, hope we got a chance to look at that and see that deserves a tax levy, the actual growth. Property value, that's decreased, or will decrease our tax rates by, so. Excellent, there. Any questions or comments on that? Motion approved. Cheryl, second. Yeah, all in favor? Approved. Mentor facility agreements, we've, we each year, we're mentioning, and. The mentor?
Well, we, we have Melissa Gilligan, just been our mentor facilitator for a couple of years now. We just thought it would be great practice to have a contract, a quick document, contract in place for her. So that's what this is.
It's a clear state requirement. Free practice first quarter of the month, because we're going to have to call, but we're going to be next year. Any other questions or comments on the mentor? The motion approved that. John, second, definitely, all in favor? Approved. And then we have the athletic code conduct. Any questions, any comments tomorrow on changes? My review is, if you're going to.
Mr. White, do you want to make any comments about the athletic code of conduct, what the changes were?
Real quick, just the front cover, the date, the new board members, that, you know, are in the middle, we had to make that. Really, from the modified program, except for the main frame, New York State Public High School changed that process. It's called the athletic placement process, instead of selective classification. So it's just really, it's just a different order of that. Really, there's a couple grammar self-spelling, rationale changes. We completed a sentence in varsity class D where we kind of just say, maximum potential in sports is the world-class varsity program. And then at the administrator page, section two, we had a word, what we try not to do to our parents before the game reactive, needing to come talk to the coach. In, in our old code of conduct, we use the word confront. And we thought that, you know, it's kind of a, not such a great word to use, confront. So we kind of took, got rid of that and just said, make sure to talk about multiple solutions. It's not a great time of multiple solutions, so it's a confront at that time. So just a better word. It was, last year, zero.
So last year, zero athletic code conduct something here, so. That's my goal for this year.
Any final comments or questions? The motion approved that by code conduct. Joanna, second, Cheryl, opposed.
If I could just accent, Mr. Tyler, I know this comment, I think it's by nine times now that our team has been recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as uh we see was on the sportsmanship board, at least nine years in the world. That community services that year, community service board last year, we're uh eight-five percent of our teams who saw that, the teams that are still working, not getting paid. So I would say that the basic requirements for participation in sports are outlined in the athletic code conduct. But our student China, our student athletes have all been China, they exceed the code of conduct. This is critical to coaches, students, and our candidates, and so on.
What's remarkable, it's been around a long time with myself. You see our kids that are graduating, you know, the college, your ten years, fifteen, twenty, thirty years now. Like our school, our student athletes are doing all these communities all over the world, it's really, it's amazing.
And some of them are teaching in college, or sometimes, many. But what's nice is that uh, like you said, well, you guys all know Kevin Smith. Now I got a call about playing for the Toronto Blue Jays now. He went out of his way, texted a lot of us, hey, thank you for everything you did at Columbia High School. To me, it was a lot of the coaches, a lot of the teachers, so I thought that was a class act, but here's someone that, you know, got called up for major needs. It's a great thing for our school community.
Thank you. All right, then, it's our regular business, we're going to do community reports, and we'll start with the list.
Thank you, Mr. Vino. Our appendix D committee has done very well the other last year. Uh our committee consists of um Joanne Taylor, Jimmy Q, Allison Holger, who Romanowski, and myself. Beginning in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, all co-curricular appendix D appointments will require annual application and an interview. The appendix D committee has jointly developed an application tool that will be required to be completed in order to apply and be considered for all appendix D positions in the future. Uh Mr. Goodwin, if you could pull up the application tool. The E G T A and districts have agreed to post all of the appendix D positions, which there are about a hundred of them. We're gonna be posting those positions on August thirty-first, which is opening day. Um the Teachers Association has agreed to apply they posting. And interviews will be jointly conducted by the E G T A president, order designate, and our administrators. The application tool that was developed, um we have several questions that is going to be our administrators and the E G T A president make determinations and also with that interview. Uh one of the things that we're looking at is how many hours per week will the advisor formally meet with members of the club? How many meetings per month will that advisor hold? What is the maximum number of participants for the club? Is there a participant range that the candidate wants the principal to be aware of? What's the rationale for that target range? Prior years of experience? And then a description of any and all fundraising or other financial activity that the club might need in order to operate successfully. In addition, all appendix D candidates will need to attach a letter of intent to this application. It's gonna be sent to myself and Human Resources. The letter of intent must include the goals for the club, the club's purpose, and how that advisor and selected will promote the club. This application tool, as I said, will be in the process during that interview. And also, this is a great reference for our administrators to refer back to, to make sure we do have enough students in the club. We are meeting those target goals of the club. The annual evaluation tool, Mr. Goodwin, if you could pull that up. Beginning this year as well, each of our appendix D advisors who are selected for the role will be subject to annual evaluations. This is the evaluation tool that our committee has jointly developed. The tool will be given annually, and um this is gonna provide our administrators with several talking points and areas uh and categories uh that we're gonna be looking for throughout the year. So just to run down the evaluation tool, our rating scale starts with a one, does not need expectations, it goes to a four, exceeding expectations. The first category um of evaluation would be organization and management. We're looking to make sure the coordination of activities is organized and delivered appropriately. That the advisor is planning of activities which our city can organize for our students. Communication is frequent and clear. Providing appropriate supervision of all students and all community members all times. And demonstrating and maintaining the appropriate complexity for level of production, the equipment, the material control, and any or maintenance. The second category is going to be engagement and participation. We're looking to make sure our students are involved in numerous activities in a manner which positively represents the school community and allows for student personal growth. We're looking for student attendance to be aligned with the target student population goals, which they would have reported on that application to the interview. We're looking to make sure the frequency of meetings is consistent and supportive of student participation. And that the advisor's time commitment is appropriate for the line of the club meeting expectations. And lastly, for fiscal management, as applicable, um we're looking to make sure all the procedures are being followed, outlined by our district policies. And all records are being maintained timely and accurate. There is a section for the appendix D uh advisor to have comments. It also leaves a comment for our administrators. Um both the administrator and the advisor have to sign off on the evaluation tool. It will be stored in the personnel file of the individual. Down the end, consistent with the appendix D, we have an area for recommended for appointment, recommended for appointment improvement plan, or not recommended for appointment. It was discussed at length in our committee meetings, this is not a promise for appointment in the next year. Every year you have to go through an application process, every process you have to be selected. And then board approved at a future appointment date to be uh successful when you got that club. Lastly, we were tasked with creating a new compensation matrix, this is probably the most challenging of all the tasks. We spent probably each week looking at all of the appendix D annual reports submitted over the last three to four years. We gathered all that data, put it into a spreadsheet. Uh we looked at how many club meetings there were each and every year, how many participants were there? Was it a club that was in school that was operating, was it a club that was operating outside of the school district? Uh was it a club that was operating on the weekends? What was the complexity of the club? Um did the club require a community member involvement, what are your fundraising activities? So we looked at all of the data at length, and we ended up um coming up with a five-tier scale. Tier five, you're recommending being compensated at four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Tier four at two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. Tier three at one thousand nine hundred, tier two at a thousand, and tier one at six fifteen. It's important to note that the recommended new week rated cost matrix is within the budgeted brackets. Um swing back multiple times to the driver, making sure the money is reflected what we have, um and we are right there. The homework hotline and the Belltop Young Scholar Literacy Club have been eliminated in this new uh cost matrix. And the committee has agreed to compensate one for an unpaid club, which is the math league, by using the monies from those two clubs that will no longer be operating. And then lastly, we looked at the music stipend, so chorus, band, orchestra. And we reevaluated their compensation and provided their own set of tiers. Our high school music advisors, um their recommendation is one thousand six oh five. At the middle school, one thousand two ninety-five, and at the elementary school, five fifteen. This new cost matrix will not be implemented until the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um and the reason for that is we have an agreement with our teachers association that was agreed to our last um contract renewal. And we would like to provide our advisors with one year so that they know of the cost changes, they can make informed decisions in the next application process. Does anyone have any questions about tools?
I just have a comment. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well said.
You know, great work for the committee, um staying with the budget, realigning things, having a community system. And I believe our students see the most out of the efforts of the extracurricular activities in the club. Great work. And Risa, thanks for sticking with it, and Joanne for your support and feedback as a community member and one member to sit against that effort, so. Well done.
Thank you very much. And our appendix D committee has agreed to continue our meetings so we can evaluate the new processes put in place. Um we can look at how the interview processes went, how the application process went, and I will report on that on a future day. Uh the last update I want to provide is an update on our current staffing vacancies. Right now, um we have two K to three intervention specialists that we're looking for. The posting flows on the twenty-fourth, we're going to recommit the interview ready next week. We have a point two art teacher position at the middle school, one Spanish position, five full-time teaching assistant positions, two part-time teaching assistant positions, two secretaries, a mechanic, a bussade, five monitors, and one senior monitor. So we're looking at about eleven instructional right now and ten non-instructional.
We got a challenge with that.
They really are, because we, you know, we have received letters of resignation that equals, you know, confronts, right? So that has resulted in some of these sequences.
I did want to go back to the appendix D, we want to thank our E G T A for working with the administration as well. You know, and making sure that that we'd like to be spare at a low cost to the board, to just fund the remiss and things like that. But yeah, the the situation is is challenging, so. Thank you, everyone, I'll support staff, best rapport especially, I'm challenging that as substitutes, all support positions. It's a, it's a, it's a tough environment for schools and then for businesses in general, looking for for help, so. Stay with it, and I'll be there, and I think uh we'll see how all those things next week. That's true.
I also was wanting to add a comment then about the G T A, along with asking Allison.
Good, so pass the microphone.
They, they really did take the time to listen and try to see our side of what we were saying and why we were saying um what we thought needed to be done. Um they really listened about community, um you know, reporting back to the community, not raising the money. Uh they really heard us and they realized that um we were trying to act in the best interest of the students, the staff, and the community.
Uh Mr. Q. My voice.
I guess it's your voice.
Any questions? I'll be right back. Let's close our committee report out. Next item is to take a motion, we have none of this. Or have all business?
That whole business thing? I just wanted to let everyone know that uh we're moving forward with the uh board retreat and all the connections that have been made, that will be received in an email when this official is there.
Thank you, John, appreciate the time. Consent agenda, items A to G, any questions, comments on the consent agenda? Seeing no, motion approved by consent. Kathleen, second, Joanna, opposed. Approved. We have a deadline to the agenda, we have our team, we and Tyler, this is my heart, and then we also have substitute. Any questions or comments on this yet? Glad we have a support, it's great. To work together on the table. Seeing no questions, we have motion to approve that, Joanna, second, John, opposed. Uh we're onto new business, any new business items for the question? Second public forum, I'll give the public two comments, two comments, all right? No, thank you. And our second word forum, we'll start at my right with Frank, anyone? Nope, you're good. Joanna? Kathleen? John? And Cheryl, anything? My comment is I appreciate the the feedback we got today, the involvement, the behavior comments. Support, we have it, but uh if I missed the email, I will go back and look at it. Other than that, the next step is we do uh with our business for today, um we do have the pre-executive session for purposes of personal matters. So we have no business after the executive session, so the fact the motion to move into executive session? Frank, second, Cheryl, opposed. All right, well, we have a decision, thank everyone for attending this evening, I appreciate it. Have a good night.